Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Workman. I'm the president of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm thrilled to welcome you here today to the chamber's third and final Meet the Candidates for the 2024 election season. Before we get started, just a reminder to silence your cellphones. We greatly appreciate that. And just want to let you know why the chamber is hosting the event. We serve as the local advocate for our business community, and we work with many of our lawmakers from the city to the county to the state, even the federal level, to represent the interests of our business community. And I too am personally dedicated to providing and supporting a thriving business environment. And so that's why we host Meet the Candidates, and we're happy to partner with Leighton Media, Peg Access, Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and our candidates and the community who make this all happen. So again, thank you all for attending. Today, we're going to hear from candidates for the Ottertail County Commissioners, as well as the Minnesota House of Representatives, District 9A. And our questions focus on the issues that impact our business community. So we'll start just to welcome our candidates for the Ottertail County Commissioners. We have for District 1, Dan Buckholz; District 3, Greg Anderson and Kurt Mortenson; District 5, Ben Shire and Sean Sullivan; and our candidates for the Minnesota House of Representatives, District 9A, Jeff Backer and Michael Zimko. And I'm going to turn over the microphone to our moderator today, Dave Bishop with Leighton Media. He's our news director, and he's going to make sure the show goes on smoothly. And today, we are sharing the microphone. So Dan, you get it first.
Lucky me.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, everyone. The chamber's Meet the Candidates forum will begin with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. Then we'll move on to the question and answer format, where each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. The yellow flag will be shown when 15 seconds remain, and the red flag indicates that your time has ended. We will rotate the order in which your questions are answered. This is not a debate, and questions will not be taken from the audience. We appreciate respectful behavior, so please hold all applause until the end of the forum. Well, let's start off with the opening statement. Spend two minutes telling us about yourself and share the skills and abilities that you've developed that will be beneficial as serving as county commissioner or as state representative. We'll start District 1, Dan Buckholz.
All right, I'm Dan Buckholz. I'm a retired dairy farmer. I milked cows for 45 years, and now I am a county commissioner. After four--this is my third election in four years. Lucky me. I have two kids and my five grandchildren. I used to be a township supervisor, who helped me out a lot in this job. My main purpose in being a commissioner is being able to talk to people. I can sit down and talk to anyone in this room, and that is so valuable in this job. And have an open mind, and when somebody calls you, you've got to answer them back and talk to them. And I think that's my best skill for being a commissioner, and I appreciate your support again.
But just a reminder to the candidates, talk directly into the microphone. Okay? Up next, we've got District 3, Greg Anderson.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name's Greg Anderson. I'm running for county commissioner for District 3. Seven years ago, I was a federal employee. I retired, and I chose this county. I could have went anywhere, but I specifically picked Ottertail County because it's awesome, it's beautiful, and this is where I'm going to be. A little bit about myself. I'm an Army veteran. I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer. I have an associate's degree in criminal justice. And, excuse me, I have a law enforcement degree, and I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Couple of reasons I wanted to run for commissioners. I noticed some of the policies that were passed, I don't believe are good for property right owners. They're infringing on some of the rights we have as property owners. High property taxes are another issue I want to tackle if I win. The roads, in my opinion, in this county are lousy. And there's no public input at the commissioner meetings on Tuesdays. All of these issues I would like to address. As far as myself, I consider myself a fiscally responsible person. I want less government control in my lives, and I want to protect the rights of the voters. In closing, I wore a uniform. Twenty-eight years of my life, I'm a serving kind of person. I wore it in the service. I wore it as a federal law enforcement officer, and now I'm going to trade it in for an invisible uniform with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kurt Mortenson.
Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone who made this evening or this afternoon possible. Kurt Mortenson, I'm District 3, Ottertail County Commissioner. And for some brief background, my wife Heidi and I live on a family farm in rural Underwood. I graduated from the Underwood School. Heidi is a Hillcrest graduate. We met in college. We returned here to this area after I graduated from the University of Minnesota Law School. This was always home to us. And I worked as a prosecutor in the Ottertail County Attorney's Office for approaching 30 years. In 2020, I was elected District 3 County Commissioner, providing me an opportunity to serve--excuse me--in a new and challenging role in a different type of public service. I was re-elected again in 2022. Today, I want to continue to serve the residents of District 3 and all citizens of Ottertail County. My training and experience as a prosecutor required sound discretion and independent judgment in the area of public safety, but it also required collaboration with other agencies, working together for a common goal. This laid the foundation for service as a county commissioner, advocating for resident needs and effective solutions. Serving as District 3 Commissioner has opened opportunities to advocate at the legislative level and work on committees that brought about legislative change positively impacting Ottertail County, but actually counties throughout the state of Minnesota. I've demonstrated leadership on the Ottertail County Board. I currently serve as the board chair. I serve on the State Community Supervision Advisory Committee that's charged with the task of making recommendations to the commissioner of corrections of public safety, along with numerous other committees ranging from watersheds and workforce to economic development and growth. I look forward to continuing the work that I began and move that needle even further, advancing positive change for the county.
Thank you, Kurt. Let's move to District 5, Ben Shire.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Leighton Broadcasting, for putting this on. Thanks to Lisa in the chamber. And thanks, everyone in the audience. Thanks for taking an hour out of your day to show up and listen to some people talk about their ideas for how they see the community, the county moving forward. You know, this year, I've been thinking a lot about 20 years ago, a conversation I had with my dad. And I was, quite honestly, I was complaining. I was telling him about the way I thought things should be in the community. And he told me to--he said, "Stop complaining and step up and do something about it. Be part of the solution." And I did. I ran for city council 20 years ago. And I remember that when I decided to run for city council, I didn't even know what ward I lived in. But I did understand, I did know that Tessa, my wife Tess, and I had decided this is where we're going to raise our family, and we were going to be part of the community. We were going to do everything we could to make it better. So we got involved. I saw the lesson that my parents gave me growing up in this community, coaching the kids' activities, their sports teams, their scout troops. And Tess and I have taken that--Tess and I have five kids. My wife Tess and I have five kids, and we've been heavily involved in the community for the past 20 years. Been involved in our church, in the arts, Center for the Arts, the cadets, the nonprofits, the Salvation Army, the lawn mowing club, the Walk of Flags, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Peg Access. We've been involved in so many ways in our community. We also felt that the downtown is the heartbeat and the soul of the business community. Any thriving community has a strong downtown. And so we put everything we had as a family, financially, emotionally, and physically, into two businesses on Main Street. We built those businesses. They were successful. They employed hundreds of people in this community over the course of their seven years. And then I got involved, and I've been elected office for 16 years in this community. And I'm incredibly proud of the work we've done by building relationships and working together to build a strong community. And I want to bring those skills, those experiences, and those relationships to the county level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Sean Sullivan.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming today. And again, thank you to the chamber and to Leighton Broadcasting and Peg Access for hosting this great event. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Sean Sullivan. I'm running for county commissioner at District 5. And my wife and I moved here in 2009. She's a Fergus Falls native. I'm originally from Morehead. We finished raising our family here, and we became empty nesters just this past year. So we're in a new season of life and expecting our first grandchild in a couple of weeks, too. So really looking forward to that. My professional life, I've tried to lead a life of service my entire professional life. I've been in leadership positions just about everywhere I've went. I spent six years in the U.S. Navy as part of the nuclear power program, where very academically rigorous schooling for two years, and then sent to the fleet where I operated and led teams that operated and managed the nuclear reactor on the U.S. Navy warship. After that, after getting out of the Navy, I entered the corporate world, the financial services sector, and have been in leadership positions for just about 30 years in that world. My time in Fergus Falls has been spent-- I operated two very successful branches, bank branches here in Fergus Falls, and I helped open a third bank branch here in Fergus Falls. And I spent my career in banking, helping small businesses across this community, literally helping dozens and dozens of small businesses grow and thrive within this very community. And in the last couple of years, I actually took a step and went out on my own and started my own business. I own a business consulting firm called Clarity Business, and we help businesses and nonprofits understand and act on their financial statements. I even act as fractional chief financial officer for a couple of local businesses here in town. So I'm a numbers guy through and through. I'll freely admit that. I have real-world practical leadership experience. I've led teams of over 100 people at any one time. And in every leadership position, it was about casting a vision for the organization and collaborating with people with very diverse backgrounds and very diverse viewpoints towards a common goal. And I look forward to serving the people of Ottertail County. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Let's move to the House of Representatives, District 9A, Jeff Backer.
Yeah. First of all, many thanks for everybody being here. You could have been someplace else today, so thank you and for putting this on. Just to give people a reference of District House 9, it's about the size of the state of Vermont, all of Traverse County, Wilkin, two-fifths western part of Ottertail, and then all Grant County. I'm from Brown's Valley, which is the key west of the district, okay? It's a hump-up tip-elbow-nose of the district. The reason I like serving is, first of all, I believe people of Judeo-Christian values need to get involved. On the lighter side, there's two of me. I have an identical twin brother. Please do not tell him I look better, okay? Background, I have volunteered as an EMT for over--it was 30 years this year. Business owner for 34 years with my twin brother. Also elder in our church, been married for 31 years. How I got started serving the public was in 1993, put together our own EDA in Brown's Valley. Didn't know what I was doing. Sometimes I don't do--today you don't know what I'm doing. But then ran for Council One, ran for mayor, served as mayor during the worst time in our community because we had the worst flood ever in 2007. People said, "Hey, you could never build a diversion project," and we did it in the state of South Dakota. That was interesting. Served on the school board, and I have had the honor to serve as a state representative for five terms. It is a true honor to serve folks. That's why I like and joined serving as an EMT. Just came back from a two-day trip in Washington, which we're trying to make policy changes so we can provide better EMS services here in Minnesota. And that was been successful here. That's something that's a passion, because when someone dials 911, you want to make sure the rake is there. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's move on to Michael Zimko.
Hi, everyone. I'm new. I was born in Texas. Went to school on the East Coast, majored in philosophy. Finally got a degree from the University of Minnesota, again in philosophy, a different kind of philosophy. But I've been in Minnesota since '94, and I came here to St. John's. Most of my career, I've been raising money for charities. So St. John's was the first in Minnesota. Then I went to the cities, University of Minnesota, Children's Hospital, Fairview, Ebenezer. When I was asked to run for this position, I thought about, okay, so what things can I look at my background and say, "All right, I'm going to pick from that because I have some experience in that, and I think I can contribute something in that?" And I began to think about what I had done. And one of them was I worked for five years at a senior care organization. And when I moved to this part of the state, I saw that 22% to 25% of the people are over 65. Oh, goodness. We need more senior care. And I thought, "I've got some experience with that, so I like that." I spent 14 years raising money to help feed people. I'm a potter. And there's an event called Empty Bulls, and it happened here at the college this past April. I participated in that. It raises money for food shelves. And so I thought, "Okay, feeding people." So those two, and ironically, the senior care place got me involved with childcare because the senior care place had a childcare center. And if you've never smiled for at least nine hours straight, get together with a bunch of five-year-olds and 80-year-olds. Those two groups love each other. You'll smile. So I'm happy to be here to run, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we're going to move on to the questions. You'll each have 90 seconds. That's a minute and a half to answer each question. We'll rotate the order in which questions are answered. Question number one is for all candidates. If you could shape the future of Ottertail County and the state of Minnesota, what would it look like, and how would you envision your role? We're going to start with Ottertail County District 1, Dan Buckholz.
You want to give me that question when we're done?
Yep. If you could shape the future of Ottertail County and the state of Minnesota, what would it look like, and how would you envision your role?
I think I would really enjoy not getting commands from the state of Minnesota and go, "Here you go, Ottertail County. You guys deal with it. We're going to sign these bills down here. No, we're going to pass it over to your county without giving us any money, without giving us any knowledge about it. Just deal with it." I think that's so wrong. And if this county commissioner could do anything about that, state representatives on the end down there, you can just handle your own problems down there, and then give us a decent program so we can handle it ourselves. And give us the money. You want us to do all this stuff around here, and we don't have the money for it. And that's--I don't like that at all. So that's my vision, is just stay the course. And, you know, we're doing the right thing. District 1, that's my district. We've got a lot of progressive people around there. We're building, and things are just good. So let's just stay the course. But we need some more help from the state to just do their part than we'll do our part.
Thank you, Dan. Let's go District 3, Greg Anderson.
My vision is a simple one. I would like to see some major manufacturing come into this area. It seems kind of like to me, Fergus has turned into a ghost town. We need some good-paying jobs. We have the people, but we just don't have the paying jobs. And I'm tired of seeing all these empty businesses and empty buildings around Fergus Falls. No wonder people keep driving as they go by. I think we need to change the environment here. And I think we need less Minnesota control, more county control. We don't need the state of Minnesota telling us what to do. I would like to stand on our own. It's a simple thing. And honestly, I still think the taxes in this state are entirely too high. Businesses are fleeing Minnesota, and where are they going? Going to South Dakota, North Dakota. We need to change this, or nobody's going to want to come here. I mean, I picked this county. I don't be darned if it's going to die on us. So that's kind of my vision. And I have one more thing. Tourism. Why is Alex booming on the weekends, and why is Fergus Falls not? We are missing the boat on tourism. This could be Mecca on the weekends. People coming here, buying bait, eating. Seems like we're missing it. That's just my opinion. And one quick note, I want to say hi to my wife who's here, because if I didn't mention her, I'm going to be sleeping in the yard tonight. Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Greg. Kurt Mortenson.
Thank you. In terms of looking ahead to Ottertail County in the future, I think there's a number of key components that come into play. One is economic development. Economic development provides expanded opportunities throughout the county. It expands our task force. But in order for economic development to occur moving forward, there needs to be available housing. If there's not available housing, then workforce is challenged, and it presents a barrier to growth. The work of our community development agency is specifically targeting that specific area. But also, housing. Housing is a need throughout the county. I'm proud to say that in 2023, Ottertail County expanded more in terms of growth. Housing growth within the county exceeded $100 million in housing investment. That growth needs to continue moving forward. In addition, a challenge is childcare. There needs to be available childcare. There needs to be affordable childcare. And if you can couple together economic growth, available housing, available workforce, together with childcare, you will see growth in Ottertail County. And that's what I envision looking forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Let's move to District 5, Ben Shire.
Yeah, thanks. You know, I think when I see the future of Ottertail County, what I'd like to see is a thriving county that builds on its heritage and the values that we've had for the last 150 years, but we're also open to new ideas and to new people. I think that I'd see a county that protects its natural resources, that promotes tourism, and it supports industry through childcare and housing. Those are the number-one things that our industry needs. We also support our small businesses. We do that by working across all levels of government, by the way, from the city, the school board, the county, and the state, by building relationships and working collaboratively. So as far as the state, the state of Minnesota has a history where government works. We're looked to from the nation as a place where government works, and we've gotten away from that because it doesn't take a political scientist to look at a political map and see that we're divided in this state. We need to get back to the point where there are divergent views from rural and greater Minnesota, along with urban and the metropolitan area, that work together to find solutions, to have a state that moves forward together. Because Minnesota has a history that few other states can match, but it's happened because there have been members of both parties from both the rural and urban areas of this state working together to move the state forward. And that's what we need to get back to.
Thank you, Ben. Sean Sullivan.
All right. Yeah, I think a lot of good ideas here, a lot of things that I can echo as well. You know, one of the big things for me, as we look at our governance, you know, local autonomy and local control is very important to me. Obviously, we need to collaborate with the state. But I think if we could find a way to reduce our tax burden, reduce our regulatory burden, that's going to unleash economic prosperity for all of Minnesota. And if we can find ways to do that by collaborating with state representatives and state leaders, that is just only going to help Ottertail County. You know, again, back to local autonomy, local control, all we have is each other. This is it. This is our community. This is who we have. And all we have is our friends and neighbors. And we have to count on each other and rely on each other. And so nobody from St. Paul is necessarily going to come and save us, but we have to work very closely with them and get on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Let's move to the House of Representative Candidates for District 9A, Jeff Backer.
Yeah. You know, Minnesota has a phenomenal resource base. If we would get rid of the state government, all the regulations, taxes, Minnesota would be larger economically than Florida and Texas. It is, we have such huge resources. And this is something that I've been fighting, because if we go down from Canada down to Iowa, we do not have a larger community on the Minnesota side. Really simple, less taxes. We don't need to continue to raise taxes. The last two years, under one-party control, raised taxes by $10 billion. Squandered a $19 billion surplus, and have funded fraud at a half a billion dollars. One-party control does not work. I've been in there when we had divided government, and divided government works because if you have three kids in the room with no parents, they are naughty. And that's what has happened the last two years, under one-party control. It really is. I've seen it. I'm seen as a person that can work across aisles, but when the minority, which generally is the greater Minnesota reps, are pushed out of the room because the metro crowd thinks they know best, this is why we're in the mess. We need to reward makers, lower taxes, regulations, release the energy of Minnesotans, and we would kick the butts of Texans and Floridians, or Philidians, whatever they call themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael Zimko.
What a lot of great ideas. This question makes me think a couple of the things I've been thinking about. I mentioned earlier that senior care and childcare, in my mind, came together. That--I know how expensive childcare can be. And I'm thinking childcare should essentially not cost because it takes--because it then frees people up to have a life with their family. I like the idea of childcare inside of hospitals as well as senior care facilities. I can tell you this. If we don't deal with the issue of seniors, we're going to be in a mess in five years, 10 years. And I think building more senior care facilities is a big part of what needs to happen. And I think that could be something the state would do. I do like very much the idea of reducing taxes. Here's my thought. On the first $85,000 of taxable income and 90% reduction, what do you think? Would that--most people would benefit from that. And I think we can do those things, and I think we can do those things and be just fine. But I think, yes, here in this part of Minnesota, seniors, we need to think about them and take care of them.
Thank you, Michael. The next couple of questions will be for just the county commissioner candidates. What strategy would you propose to tackle the challenges of attracting and retaining workforce, as well as providing accessible daycare and affordable housing in Ottertail County? We'll start at District 3, Kurt Mortenson.
Thank you. I did touch on this in my earlier comments, but in terms of workforce, the county has to continue what it has been doing in terms of intentional efforts to reach out and to sell this community to not only Minnesota, but to the multi-state regional area. We have a wonderful county. We have wonderful resources. We have more lakes than any of any county in the United States. And in order to grow our workforce, that's a component of it. I would also note that Ottertail County, in a recent MedPost article, was noted as a county that's been beating the trend in terms of population. We have had a net gain of population when the projection some years back was for a decline in population. That just didn't happen accidentally. It happened because there was intentional efforts to reach out and grow our population and to grow our workforce. Second part of this question related to housing. We need to continue what we're doing. I mentioned earlier, $100 million invested in 2023. That's because there's a potential effort to do that. We have a goal of 5,000 units to be added in 2025. We're well on our way to that goal. We have more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Greg Anderson.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, workforce has always been a challenge in Ottertail County, and it's still going to be a challenge. I don't know how you bring the people in, but I have a couple of good ideas. I think you have to bring in some serious manufacturing and some big corporate jobs, like Monarch or something like that, so people can actually get a livable wage. People need a job where they feel good about themselves, and they need a job where they can actually start working on their 401K. And if you get those type of jobs, you're going to bring the people in. And as far as housing, I am going to lean towards, instead of apartment buildings, houses. People want to eventually be able to afford a house. And how do you do that? With the tax rate right now at, what, 8%? Nobody can afford it. So the state of Minnesota has got to get going and drop these taxes so people can start affording a house. I don't know if it's ever going to be possible, but that's what I want to do with housing. As far as daycare, daycare is very expensive. I remember when we had a son many years ago, we could barely afford to pay for it. And people are struggling with daycare. The only way you're going to get the daycare issue solved is to have some economic growth in the area and bring in some businesses where people can actually work at a job that they can afford to do all the stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Let's move to County District 5, Sean Sullivan.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Definitely a multifaceted problem between workforce, housing, and childcare. As far as workforce goes-- As far as workforce goes, you know, one of the big things we need to do is continue to promote Otter Tail County as a place to live and work. I think Kurt spoke to that a little bit, and, and the others as well. We have to market our county better and make, make sure that people know this is the, this needs to be a destination for people to come. We have so many great assets, so many great resources to, that we can promote in this county as well. And, and the other side of that coin is to continue to try to unleash economic prosperity within the county. Now, as far as, as far as housing goes, I think a big issue with that, obviously, you know, I think we have forty open manufacturing jobs in this community right now. I don't know if they're all full-time or part-time. And, and, you know, I don't know if those, you know, are for apartments or, or that sort of thing. But the problem in general with housing is usually government interference, because twenty-five to thirty percent of construction of a, of a house is wrapped up in the regulations. And so if we can find a way to streamline some of that, streamline some of the code and unleash the developers and make it more profitable for developers to build, you can build a house now, but it's still not necessarily going to be affordable to most. And, and so I think if we try to find ways to streamline that path, that'll be very helpful. And then finally, on daycare, one of the big, big problems again with daycare, I think, is also government regulations. It's prohibitively expensive to open a daycare center because of all the regulations in this, in this state. It's not profitable at all, and there's several different models that I could talk to later about that.
Thank you, Sean. Ben Shire.
Yeah, thanks. I think, you know, think about economic development and workforce. You know, the, the idea of thirty years ago, forty years ago, chasing smokestacks and trying to bring industry in by large government incentives is dumb. We need to create communities in which people want to live, and that's where the jobs are going to be. And that's what we've done in Fergus Falls during my time as mayor. We've created a community where people want to live by making investments in our historic downtown and our beautiful river. And you've seen the results when you walk down Lincoln Avenue along the river. As far as works, but, but I've talked to businesses every day, and I talk to industry leaders in Fergus Falls every day, and they'll tell you the number one thing, they have the job openings. They have paying, they have living wage jobs. They don't have the housing and the childcare for the people to live, to take those jobs. And it's not an easy, it's not an easy solution. It takes public-private partnerships. I'll give you one example. We worked with a private developer who's built affordable workforce housing across the state. For him to come in to build a twelve million dollar facility in Fergus Falls of sixty units, there's a four, he needed a four million dollar grant from the state to make that happen. What I'm saying is it's upside down. We don't build partnerships at the state and at the county level to make sure that we're working efficiently across these, it's not a simple matter of like, let's build housing, because guess what? You have to build the relationships to get the funding from the state in order to make these projects feasible. And we've done that with, with childcare, just real briefly. That's, you know, a, a private business. I think there's different models. We need to support, we need to support those and listen to the private, private industry.
Thank you, Ben. We'll go to District One and Dan Buckles.
All right, in childcare, I'm living it. My daughter just had twins here last week. She found out nine months ago that she needed daycare, so she got one. Now she has twins, now she needs to find another place for the other kid. So that's, that's this regulation, like you guys said before, the regulations are just way too hard. And I have another, my, my son has a daycare, and the regulations there are just, she's already had. She wants to give it up because these guys are bothering them all the time about doing this, doing that, and this. I don't know, I don't approve of it, but when I did this four years ago, I said, we got trouble down here, and we got trouble up there. For the senior citizens, we need to take care of our senior citizens, and we need to take care of our, our childcare. And if we want people to go to work, they got to be able to daycare. Like in perm now, we have way too many industry jobs, so it isn't the bankers' hours from seven-thirty to five. We got different shifts, so we need daycare for that. We opened up our old perm hospital for help us out a couple more, more new hours to help out there. But the workforce, like you guys said, we got all over, not hiring, now hiring, and how we're going to get that, you know, we're, what we do have is in, we put up a lot of one-story houses in town. So we want the farmers to move off the farm, come into town, live in your one-story house, and to have somebody go out and buy that farm instead.
Thank you, Dan. Question number three is also just for the county commissioner candidates. Given concerns about these soaring property taxes, what specific actions would you take to lower taxes for residents and businesses in Otter Tail County? We'll start at District Five with Ben Shire.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. This is the number one issue when I knock on doors, when I talk to people, property taxes, and I get it. I'm a property owner as well. And I would say, I'd say this, knowing that, having been on the budget process for the city of Fergus Falls for eight of the last sixteen years, or for ten of the last sixteen years, I know this problem is not easy. If you think about inflation, inflation hits government as well. So what we need to do is we need to create efficiencies across, across government. We're not going to cut our way to prospering our communities, but we do need to realize that property taxes are too high, and there's a, the overall tax burden on residents is too high. I'll give you to the specifics. In Fergus Falls, we have a library, we have a landfill, we have an airport that are paid for by the property tax owners in Fergus Falls that are utilized by the citizens across the county, or at least a good portion of the county. So in other counties, they use different methods of paying for those. So our, our services need to be paired with who uses them and paid for them. That's when we combine and efficient, you know, we have to reduce redundancy and create efficiencies that lowers the overall tax burden. The last thing I'll say is, when you have a county or a city or any local government tax budget, budget, the, the state government aid is incredibly important, right? And so we have to create relationships with state, with St. Paul, to make sure that they're living up to their responsibilities and their promises to help fund local governments, and so that the budgets at the state level reflect the budgets of families in the communities in which they, which they serve and their commitments are to help fund those.
Thank you, Ben. Sean Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, also, you know, it, it is the number one thing I hear when I'm knocking on doors, and, and I've heard from at least four, or if not five, different older folks who are worried about being taxed out of their home, and that's just not right. That's not fair. Now, we can't just go ahead and blatantly immediately lower property taxes. And I think I kind of agree with Ben. We need to find efficiencies in government. I mean, there, there's no doubt, if we need to look at the expense side first before we look at the revenue side. And there's a lot of ways, you know, I can't say what we're going to cut here or there, but I, I do know that in my background in operations, we can find ways to make things run more smoothly and be more efficient, and that will lead to further cost savings. Because we cannot continue to, 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 to impact our citizens with this continuous rise of, of taxes. It's just between the state taxes and property taxes, it's just too much. It almost becomes unlivable sometimes in Minnesota for some people. And that's unfortunate because this is one of the greatest states in the country. So what I want to do is look at the budget, pass a fiscally conservative budget that works for everybody, and make sure our departments work with the other commissioners and the department heads in the county, and make sure that we are operating as efficiently and as effectively as possible, and stop the growth of government, slow the growth of government down. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. We'll go to District One and Dan Buckles.
Well, our solid waste tax on your bill, there are two, no. I don't know if you guys know this, but the solid waste tax is on every tax, property taxes. That goes to the state and goes into a general fund, and it doesn't go to our solid waste. I think that is totally wrong, and we, we're working on it really hard to get that changed. So we started putting that money where it belongs into our solid waste. And the property taxes, I'm, I live on Little Pine Lake on North Shore there, and there's houses for sale within a week, and they're, they're sold. And they're sold higher than what, what they want. So that, there's a lot of housing out there, or they're coming in from North Dakota, Iowa, whatever. A lot of them are staying in, when you get, when you buy the house, they're coming from, they, from the family. We, we went to a COLA meeting here last week, and there was thirty-eight homes in Otter Tail County. If you live on a lake, it remains in the, it remains in the family. And there's seven of them, if you live in town, that house changes. So if you've got a house in, on a lake that stays in the family for thirty-eight years, and if you live in town, it's liable to change for seven years. And the taxes, I'm telling you, is this the, it's a hornet's nest out here with the, trying to do roads. Everything's gone up with that, and it's hard to keep track of it all. All right?
Thank you, Dan. District Three, Greg Anderson.
Taxes, number one issue people have been complaining about for months. One of the main reasons I got in this race, they're entirely too high. If you want to lower the taxes, you have to dig through the county's budget and go through it line by line. There's plenty of waste we could get rid of, and I guarantee you, we could probably find some fraud even right here in Otter Tail County. So if you want your taxes lowered, I want to dig through that budget. That's my number one issue. And as far as inflation goes, inflation is caused by bad policies like the federal government is doing. They created some of these policies. We can't control that, but I'm telling you, bad policies create inflation. Now, if you want to lower taxes, we have to do a few things. And I believe that talking to the people, finding out what they want and what they don't want. There are certain things out there that the county's doing I don't think we need, but there are some things, you need some taxes to pay for services, but I think property taxes is my number one goal. I'm going to beat on that until I either win or lose. That's one of the main reasons I got in this race, and so everybody almost here agrees it's killing this county and it's killing the state. And the feds aren't helping us at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kurt Mortensen.
Thank you. In terms of property taxes, nobody wants to pay more taxes than they have to, to get the type of services that they expect. That's a reasonable expectation. My message on the county board, since the first time I was elected, was reasonable budgetary restraint. That's a message that I've echoed across the years. That's a message that I echoed at our last meeting. The county board established a preliminary budget, which means it can't go higher, it can only go lower. But it established a preliminary budget of three point nine seven at our last meeting for the twenty twenty-five year. In an inflationary environment that exceeds that percentage, that took a, a careful and an honest look at our, at our budget. It was a request for departments to, to be as restrictive as they could in terms of establishing a budget for the department, and they came through with that. In terms of property taxes, that's governed by two things. It's governed by sales of similar properties, and it's also governed by classifications. The county needs to be within ninety and a hundred and five percent of what sales dictate. That will determine the, your estimated market value, and my time is up.
Thank you, Kurt. Question four is for all candidates. Given the rising cost of local businesses, from higher property taxes to property insurance to increased wages, employment mandates, and health insurance, what specific policies would you implement to support our local businesses? And we'll start with the candidates for District Nine-Eight, Jeff Becker.
Um, thank you. Being a business owner for thirty-four years, one of the things that we do need to do is cut taxes. I know that's, that's like, oh, yeah, everybody's going to say it, but it's true. I live one mile away from South Dakota. I can easily add twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars on my bottom line. Look at Fergus, twenty-three miles away from Wapato. Wapato continues to grow. We're not just talking about taxes, we're talking about workman's comp, we're talking about paid and sick leave, we're talking about, one of the reasons daycare is because the state government has gone after family daycare, and because of the regulations, we have this problem, and so forth. The state needs to be a partner with the makers, and what they're doing is they're stepping on our necks. Also, look at what happened with healthcare. In twenty fourteen, Minnesota had a phenomenal plan on providing insurance for independent business owners. Then they came out with the Unaffordable Care Act. I have served ten years on HHS, and I have seen how that has hurt seniors, has hurt nursing homes, and let's talk about nursing homes. I mean, we have a twenty-one day, I'm getting in the weeds here, but the regulations they put on nursing homes hurt businesses too. So we just need to reward the makers, let the market take care. When you have government that has grown forty-one percent in the last two years, who else's budget has it? Nobody. I could go on for a lot longer.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm just getting started. You, you sure you don't want to talk some more? This is, this is fun, listening to this, because I'm thinking of it from the state point of view, and all this discussion has been from the local point of view. And from the state point of view, my feeling is, yes, the state should be doing more. Now, since I'm new, I, I don't know what I need to look at when I get down there, but I will. I'll look at what's there, and I'll see what can happen in terms of lessening regulation, in terms of making things less expensive, in terms of making sure more money comes back to Minnesota as opposed to staying there. The regulation thing I'm familiar with because of senior care, but I think there are things that can happen that can make the senior care, childcare, a number of things easier, less expensive, so that we can have an easier life on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let's go to District Five, Ben Sullivan.
Uh, yeah, thank you for, for the question. So, um, you know, to make, to make life easier for small businesses in this community, there's a, there's a couple of things that I, I would like to see. You know, we have to be transparent in our budgeting process and make sure that we're streamlining any regulations and processes for permits and licensing, make it easy to open and start a business in this community, clearing any red tape and, and other bureaucratic hurdles for small businesses, and leveraging proper to proper use of tax incentives to incent businesses to open up in, in Otter Tail County. As far as government getting in the way, yeah, government needs, doesn't need to do more, they need to do less. They need to get out of the way, and, and that will help unleash businesses in this state. Government does not have a profit motive. They do not have a profit motive, and if you have capital flowing that has a profit motive, it's going to be used effectively and efficiently. Government injecting capital doesn't always work, or government spending certainly doesn't work because it does not have a profit motive to be efficient and effective. So I think less government is the answer, less regulation, less tax burden on our business is, is the key to success for small businesses in Otter Tail County. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ben Shire.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Couple things. So I already talked about, we talked about taxes, right? Like I, I laid out specific ideas to lower the overall tax burden across state, county, and local governments. So I want to talk about something different. First of all, and it's going to sound like I'm kissing up to the chamber, but listen to the Chamber of Commerce, right? There's a reason there's a Chamber of Commerce. Don, and we have listened, at the city of Fergus Falls, since my time as mayor, I can't think of one major issue when we haven't gone to the chamber, got the feedback of the chamber members, and used that in the decision-making process. Maybe it hasn't been exactly what the businesses said, but I guarantee that that input has taken and been considered and has gone into decisions the city has made. The third thing I'd say is we have to, as a business owner myself, I know the number one thing wasn't taxes if our business is successful. We needed employees. We need to create communities where people actually want to live. When I took office, there were twenty-four vacant storefronts in downtown Fergus Falls. There was five vacant big box stores along Lincoln Avenue. Look at today, they're not, they're not vacant big box stores. We had two vacant dilapidated industrial sites and a dairy processing plant that had been vacant, dilapidated thousands, grade school. We had a historic mill that has sit vacant and dilapidated on the, one of the most prominent corners of our downtown overlooking our river. Look at what we've done by making public investments in our downtown and our riverfront. There's less than a handful of empty stores. We've got that mill and a seven million dollar private investment that's going to benefit the local small businesses on our main street. That's how you get it done, through public-private partnerships.
Thank you, Ben. On to District Three, Kurt Mortensen.
Uh, thank you. I don't mean to sound like a bit of a broken record here, but there are themes that are consistent across many of these questions. And certainly, the major topic that I hear from employers and from business is the challenge with workforce. We do have, we do have a shortage in that area that's presenting barriers for expansion. And if, when we expand economic growth, and when we can expand the economic growth, that impacts our tax base. When we impact your tax base, property taxes get reduced because there's more contributing to the requirements of, of a budget. Another challenge for businesses... Another challenge for businesses that's directly related to workforce is the lack of affordable housing. They all go together. And this brings in what we've talked about before is available childcare. And those are three hurdles that impact business in our community. Another factor for workers to come to our community is quality of life. That is one of the major factors in drawing someone to a community, more than employment, more than actually knowing someone in that community. But the quality of life, and we here in Otter Tail County have reason to celebrate the quality of life that we have. And when we do that, we will grow our workforce and we will help business. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Greg Anderson.
If you want this county to thrive, you have to have, you have to, people have to want to come here. And people aren't going to come here if we don't have the businesses to support them. Now, we have, Minnesota has one of the highest tax rates in the entire country. I'm going to say this again. Businesses are leaving and they're heading to South Dakota, North Dakota. If you want them to come back, you have to come up with an idea. Now, there's a tool that some municipalities and some cities have used. It's called TIF, Tax Increment Financing. What that is, it entices companies to come here. They pay no taxes for a certain number of years. And with that, they bring employees and they bring people to the county. Now, you bring in some serious good businesses, some nice manufacturing, people will want to come here and they're going to want to stay here. And those people, what do they do? They go out and they spend money on restaurants, gas, et cetera. People want to come to a nice area. And Fergus Falls is beautiful. Everybody knows it. Problem is, nobody seems to know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. District 1, Dan Buckles.
Have you ever seen a little sticker on the bottom of our name card that says, "Live your best life in Otter Tail County"? And if we don't have an ambulance service over fighting on EMS and we want retirement people to come to Otter Tail County, and if you're going to go to Otter Tail County, you're probably going to need some ambulance service. So we need that. So we've got to live your best life in Otter Tail County. And we need to do everything possible so when we get people to move to Otter Tail County, they can live their best life. And I'm a big, big fan of small government. Townships, government probably could be the best thing possible for everybody here. Or your city government, let those guys control. They know what's going on in their county or townships, not county and state. Let the township handle their own little problems. Or if they've got a problem, they can come to us and see if we can bail them out or whatever. But I'm a big fan of little government instead of big government. I don't want big government coming in and grabbing, telling us what to do. Let the little government decide what's going on. We have a lot of business going on in Perm District 1. I guess that's what I'm representing. So if you talk about Perm, we have a big bond guard plant going up now. And just yesterday in the Perm paper, there was a meat processing plant, Perm. We're going to add on to that. So it's, we're moving, but like you said, Kurt, and the rest of these guys say here, we need housing and daycare for all of us to keep all these workers. We've got a lot of businesses, so we need some daycare to keep them going.
Thank you, Dan. Our next question is for our state representative candidates. Due to the large increase in government spending in 2023, the state's budget forecast now shows that spending growth is outpacing tax revenue growth. If the state were to encounter a budget deficit, how would you balance the budget, cut spending or increase taxes? Please explain your reasoning. We'll start with Michael Zentco.
What a great question. I've been thinking about increasing taxes on certain groups of people, decreasing taxes on other groups of people. I think there's a lot of tax money that sits in the state of Minnesota that is not going to St. Paul. And I think we can start taxing folks that have a lot of that money. I think that's, I think that's part of it. At least that's the part of the thing I would focus on. I would have to hear the question again before I would.
I can repeat it. Due to the large increases in government spending in 2023, the state's budget forecast now shows that spending growth is outpacing tax revenue growth. If the state were to encounter a budget deficit, how would you balance the budget, cut spending or increase taxes?
Right, right, right. So, no, I would, I would, I would cut, I would increase taxes first and then I would take a look at the programs to cut. I don't think there's any doubt that we could find programs to cut, but I would look at increasing the taxes first.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff Backer.
You know, there's a movie that says Back to the Future. Two years, we have raised that we, I did not vote for it. There was no we. The metro crowd raised, increased government by 41% in the last two years. This is what you get with one party control. You get, just like the drunken silver type of thing. They have wasted $19 billion. They raised your taxes by $10 billion and they grew government by 41%. No one in this room grew government. So let's go back just two years, what we did. When you have a single person who has funded fraud in the last two years of a half a million dollars, that's wrong. This is why we need to have balance in Minnesota. This is why I've been helping so much with other districts across the state. We need balance because we have a House and a Senate that does not keep the executive branch in check. I mean, when you have a half a billion dollars of fraud and you don't do anything about it and then you keep funding nonprofit, like the last two years, they funded nonprofit organizations in the metro area to a tune of $1 billion. Let's get rid of that, okay? But we just need to go back to the future. Let's just one clock back because the stuff that we have seen spent over the last two years have not been prudent use of our money, period.
Question six is also for our state representative candidates. If the state needed more revenue, would you support or oppose an expansion of the state sales tax to include business-to-business transactions? Why or why not?
Who goes first?
Jeff Backer.
That's me, okay? No. And why not? Because we already have, Minnesota is number five of the amount of people that are leaving the state and number eight if you include, that's number five for people who create jobs and number eight if you put everybody in there. So Ronald Reagan had it right. Let's lower taxes, let's attract businesses, let's spread. That way you can increase the revenue so you can fund the state programs. We are having the makers leaving the state. That's an easy no, just no. We don't want to kick more businesses out. We don't want Wapatoen to grow and Fergus to decrease. That's what's going to continue to happen. Or East Grand Forks to Grand Forks. Or Sisseton to Brown's Valley. Or Brookings to Pipestone. And there's really nothing down by Sioux Falls on the Minnesota side. I mean, this is, it would be bonkers. Here you go. Your turn.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael Zentco.
I respect your experience in this and I don't have that experience. I think that when I look at this issue or issues around money, taxation and business, I think that I feel that it brings in everything else as well. So much of what we've talked about today has to do, for example, with employees having childcare. I think that if we begin to, what I would do if you were to send me to St. Paul is I would study this issue and see what I can come up with in terms of how can we decrease the burden, the tax burden and increase what the available services are and what the growth potential is. That's what I would do.
Thank you, Michael. Well, let's wrap up with our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks in which they may include any additional information about question topics and the reasons people should support them. Closing statements are in reverse order, so we'll start with Michael Zentco for House District 9A.
I've been waiting for the moment to talk about this one because it didn't come up. The Equal Rights Amendment doesn't come up when we talk about business so much, but I think it could. We did not pass it in the last legislative session. And I think that when I think about why I agreed to do this, one of them was, the first thing I said to myself, well, Michael, you're an old hippie. So what were the things you were looking at back in the 60s that you could maybe do something about now? I need quality was a big one. And so I think high on my list is the Equal Rights Amendment. The other thing on my list is equal, equality in terms of wealth. So much of what we've been talking about here. But that's what I would, that's what I would focus on and I would appreciate your support.
Thank you, Michael. It's Jeff Backer.
Yeah, it's that model. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. I think I have a record of serving folks. There have been numerous times over the last 10 years that I have helped other people against the bureaucracy of St. Paul. It's a huge bureaucracy and it has not helped, it has helped people. State government has its place, yes, it does. But when you grow government at 40% larger than what it is, it does not. I have heard families with daycare. I've heard the challenges of the regulations with seniors. Heck, I call onto a nursing home as an EMT. I have heard business owners this year door knocking, saying, I'm moving to North Dakota, South Dakota. That does not help none of us out. Minnesota has such wealth of resources. If we would get rid of state, not get rid of, if we would move state government, put it in its place of what it should be doing, not what some metro folks would do, I believe truly that Minnesota would kick butt against Texas and Florida because those are two economic powerhouses and so forth. Let people, let people be free and do what they do well. Let them take the rest and so forth. And let's support law enforcement. And of course, I'm a big believer in EMS because we are having a crisis in EMS. So I would continue to do what I've done in the past and that is to serve the people to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's move to District 5, Sean Sullivan.
All right, thank you and thank you, everybody, again for coming. And so the way I try to lead my life, I think I alluded to in my opening remarks, is as a servant leader. And servant leadership to me, leadership to me, true leadership to me is not about, is not about power, is not about control. It's about being guided by the principles of honor and integrity and empathy for others and empowering others and ethical behavior. And that's how I try to lead my life and that's how I would lead my life if I am elected. I'm a strong believer in the Constitution. It's the greatest political document ever made. And I will defend our constitutional rights and the rights of the people of this county with my last breath. I'm fiscally responsible and transparent, fiscal accountability and transparency are a big thing to me. We have to make sure that the people know where we're spending our money and make sure that we're spending it prudently and efficiently and effectively. And transparency, the people's voices need to be heard in their government. And a lot of people I talk to don't feel like their voices are being heard in county government. And I'd like to work with the other county commissioners to find ways we can change that and change that perception, open up the open forums for people, make sure that people have an opportunity to speak at county meetings. It'd be very, very important to me. I'm clearly pro-business and pro-growth. Let's clear a runway for our businesses in Otter Tail County and work with our state representatives, hopefully to get some lower tax burden, lower regulatory burden for our businesses here. I'm so glad a couple of you mentioned EMS. That is a huge, huge issue for us and something I feel very strongly about as well. We have to make sure our EMS services are funded. We need to make sure that when you guys call 911 or a loved one calls 911, that somebody's going to be there quickly and efficiently. And lastly, I'm just not a political novice. I have no political aspirations beyond this position. I'm not checking the box on a higher, to a higher office. I have climbed the corporate ladder. I'm not climbing the political ladder. I'm here to serve the people of Otter Tail County and I will fight for you because this is all we have is our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ben Shire.
Yeah, thanks. I've been serving the citizens of Fergus Falls for the last 16 years. So I just want to say, I think that serving as mayor for the last eight years has been an honor of a lifetime. And I'll say this, I think back to that conversation I had with my dad 20 years ago when he told me to step up and run. First thing I learned when I got into city government was that I didn't have all the answers. It takes all of us. I just think I've proven that I can listen and work with anybody and everybody, regardless of their political affiliation, whether that's at the state, whether that's at the county, at the city level. And that's what it takes in order to move a community forward, is building relationships and moving a community forward together. And I think I've demonstrated that. I also talked about some of the efficiencies and I want to bring the skills and the experience and the relationships that I've built at the city level to provide those services at the county level that are so important. I talked about the importance of building efficiency to lower the overall tax burden. That's not just at the cities, not just at the counties, it's at the state, the county and the city level. We do that by building relationships and reducing redundancy. Roads and infrastructure are incredibly important. We have to worry, there's 1,100 miles of county roads. Every single one of them is paved. You think about what it costs to pave those roads 50 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. Those costs are skyrocketing, just like our family costs are. We have to have an honest conversation about what the condition of our roads are and what we're willing to pay for that. We have to build efficiencies. There's 120 miles of roads in the city of Fergus Falls. The county pays about 10% of those. We have to have stronger relationships between the city and the county government. I have the relationships to do that. Finally, we need, for our businesses, we need housing and childcare, but we need housing. I'll tell you right now, the city of Fergus Falls is the only city in the county of, in Otter Tail that doesn't have access to the CDA funding. We need to change that. We need relationships, we need stronger relationships so our businesses can grow and we give them the services. And then lastly, I'll just say, public safety and health and human services are critical. We need to continue investing in them.
Thank you, Ben. Let's move to District 3, Kurt Mortensen.
Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to connect with the public. Reaching out and expressing views is certainly central to our representative form of county government. In 2020, voters entrusted me to represent their interest in District 3. They did so again in 2022. I've been humbled by the strong community support. My desire to serve as District 3 County Commissioner is unwavering. It's grounded in a devotion to serve the citizens and to advance Otter Tail County through efficient management of resources. I desire to extend the work of the county board in maintaining a high standard, a high quality of living throughout this county through efficient and responsible budgeting, economic development and infrastructure growth. I currently serve on many committees that address some of the challenges that are facing the county, including workforce shortages, housing availability, public safety and economic growth. And I will, I work hard to bring about common sense solutions. I work hard to connect with the residents and respond to their questions, their emails, their phone calls. Whether I'm connecting at a scheduled meeting with someone or I happen to be speaking to someone at a community event, I want to hear their concerns. I want to respond and I will respond. responsiveness demonstrates respect and it is vital in a service position. responsiveness builds trust and confidence and both are necessary in effective leadership. I have demonstrated strong leadership on the Otter Tail County Board. I desire to continue this work and move the needle even further to meet both today's and tomorrow's challenges and opportunities. I would be honored to have your continued support on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Greg Anderson.
Well, I agree with Sullivan. I am not a career politician. I don't want to be one. I'm just your average Joe, just like everybody in this room, but I have a passion. I think I can bring something different to the commissioner's office and I would love to earn your guys' vote. I think my background in the military and my background in law enforcement would give a unique perspective to the commissioner's office. Something a little different, maybe not better, but something different. I have a strong military family. My son is in the Air Force and I am an Army veteran. So in our house, the red, white and blue flies every single day of the week. Now, as far as, what was I going to say? I think the commission needs some new blood. Nothing against Kurt and some of the guys, but I think it's time for a change. I think it's time for some younger people to maybe look at what's going on with the county. Maybe not, but that's up to you guys. You guys are the ones that are going to pick who gets these offices. I have never failed at anything I've ever done in my life and I promise you, I will not fail you guys. So if you want to vote for me, wonderful. If you don't, I don't want to hear about it, okay? And lastly, like you said, it's been my honor to run. I've met some wonderful people, all door knocking, guy in the blue shirt in the back. Guy in the blue shirt in the back, Al Frank. Just some wonderful people I've met out door knocking and I really don't want this to end. I just want the opportunity to work for you guys and seeing some smiles right here tells me I'm on the right track. So, thank you very much. And if you guys want to talk to me afterwards, I'll talk to you. I got my phone number and my email, whatever you guys want, I'll hang around if you're that bored to talk to me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Greg. Let's go to District 1 and Dan Buckles.
All right, farmers out there, turn up your radios, say, "Listen to me." And tractor drivers and truck drivers on District 1, County Commissioner Dan Buckles, I would really want to support again this year. Four years ago, I was out door knocking and knocked on a couple of doors. They asked me if I'm Republican or Democrat. And I said, "You guys are all wrong in this, I'm American." And they just shut up right then because all those commissioners are supposed to be nonpartisan, we're not Republican or Democrat, so we're all American and we're going to do our best for that. And here's my lifeline, right here, guys, the phone. If you've got any problem, any questions at all, call me and we can deal with it face to face. Most of my constituents are calling me on landlines or whatever, they got issues. And we have great department heads in our county and we, I use them constantly. And that is so beneficial to being a commissioner. Because we, I don't know what's going on in a lot of other departments, but these guys do, I'm going to use them. And I have been doing that for the last four years and I'm going to continue doing it. And like, I go to township meetings, I've got 13 townships in my district, I go visit them as often as I can because they all seem to have them same night, the first Tuesday, the first Monday, the month. So, I go to them and they'd be surprised how they like to hear commissioners sit and come to their meetings. They don't know what's going on in the county, so I'm all life source for them. And then the county board, I don't know, I, once in a while I get to vote no or yes. And I really appreciate that. And for the rest of the county board, listen to me, like, I'm not in favor of this, I'm going to vote no. And I, and I really appreciate the rest of the commissioners saying, hey, you do have a stance and, you know, right here, one vote, but there's four. So, but I, free for you all, you're talking here tonight or listening to me, I'm not a fluent speaker, you can figure this out by now, but I'm doing my best, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Let's give a round of applause for our candidates. Want to give a round of applause for our candidates.